Back to my question, the quasi doesn't really apply here, it's not quasi public, it is not public.
No, no, the people who can use it are any members of the public who, you know, identify themselves with a group.
If I'm walking down the street in the day. Yeah, let me talk, I'm talking time. If I'm walking down the street, the gate will not be open for me to just walk in.
That's right.
So I'd have to make arrangements to get a key or buy a key.
If we're going the key route, the alternative would be if you were, you know, part of any group, you form a group and that group would identify itself to the BMP and then, assuming, you know, they pass muster, they would get access, they would get their own code, so that group, and then as Paul was saying, in the data picture, you always have to have it scheduled because you only have so many users at a time.
We've got to proceed along here. So another question would be on taxation. How does your group fall into the real estate tax structure?
I'm not a tax attorney, but my understanding is that a properly recognized, and I believe it's still pending at IRS, but once that is approved, then they would be tax exempt, so the land would be taxed.
So this parcel is removed from the tax rules?
During the period of time when they both owned it and continued to use it for approved charitable purposes, yeah. Or not-for-profit purposes.
So, I just have a follow-up question to access of the park. You've explained that it's going to be self-supporting, it will sustain itself. So, by the user groups, but our climate does not really allow us to use it 12 months of the year, maybe four, maybe five, maybe six months of the year. So it's probably gonna be idle for the, at least half the year, if not a good portion of it. So how does that work in sustaining itself?
Well.
Because it's not being used, nobody's going in January, that's tricky.
Yeah, for the most part, that's probably true, although there are, it's a longer than four or five month season.
Well, there would be few and far between, let's put it that way.
Yeah, the, again, we have to look at the economics of it. Right now, without any user group funding of any kind, and without selling any keys or other fundraising alternatives, the BMP charity has sufficient money both to build it and to operate it going forward for some indefinite period of time. The idea of having donations from, or contributions from user groups is just to ensure that you then have an institutional continuity, and it may still require input or money from the donors to the MVP, not the user group donors.
But if we're asked to approve something, shouldn't we have some framework as to how long you could sustain it without public or user groups funding? And you haven't really told us that, like, you said there's money there to support it, but a year, two years, three years, 10 years, you know? Because we don't know how it will be supported.
Yeah, and we honestly don't know what the annual, we can project, but you don't know what the annual operating cost for the day. You can figure out roughly if you have, you know, a certain amount of water bill, a certain landscaping bill, and some maintenance work. Yeah, I mean, that's probably a projection we could provide you.
You don't have those numbers.
No, honestly, because conceptually, any application that comes before the board for any development, you know, the developer, the applicant anticipates that they'll be able to build it and sustain it, but it doesn't always happen.
Well, to your previous statement, we've never had to deal with something like this before. We usually have concrete things in front of us, and this is really not concrete.
That's true, but the concrete or the stick and mortar.
Yeah, we're just trying, I'm trying to formulate an idea of what we can expect, the future of it to be.
Are you complete?
I'm done, yeah, I'm done.
One other question, a couple back in here. You talk about interest groups, but you do not speak of what these interest groups do.
Oh, you mean how they would use the park?
Yeah, how do they use the, what actually, what actually functions and what actually occurs in the park, besides an interest group showing up?
That's a good question, Paula can address that.
Somebody wants to organize yoga in the park, that's fine. A mom and children's romp group in the park, that's fine. If merchants want to go ahead and have an off-street safe space in order to promote a street fair on the sidewalk and funnel, have people funnel into the park, that's fine too. And that also goes to the question of can somebody find an open gate and wander in? Sure, we have a lot of businesses here in Ventnor that are home-based, home-based crafters, home-based bakers, and you see them at farmers' markets. I'd love to be able to see them become regular users of a park such as that, so that people can get their business cards and know that they exist, and maybe they will then boost themselves up the ladder and become shopfront owners and take up some of the occupancy in some of the vacant shops in Ventnor. So, there's all, there's church groups, you know, it would be available for small wedding receptions. It's, it's, it's a lot of things that are out there and that are possible. As far as the winter months, we will be making sure that winter gardens aglow happens, so that there's a very bright spot with lots of lights to mark the entryway during the holiday season, and hopefully tempt people to stay in Ventnor and shop locally rather than heading to the mall. So there's some things that are special events, and then there are other things that are triggered by what the desire of people is to have a space and reserve the space and pursue their activity, so. Oh, and I do want to speak something, a bit to the tax laws. This is a public operating charity. So the public nature of it means that, over the course of a five-year span, it needs to be getting a majority of its financing from the public. Otherwise, it becomes a private charity. So we have a five-year time span in which donations to foster it and event user fees and that kind of thing need to start equalizing. You can front-load it, which is what we're doing, by buying the land and calling that a donation, by building out the park features and calling that a donation. So in the upfront part, where the money is, you know, a really high threshold, that can be done, but then over time, it needs to develop its friends of the park and its circle of, its circle of supporters who go ahead and develop the percentage of donor sourcing that the IRS wants to see. So I just need to, you know, be upfront with that, that's advice from expert legal counsel in the tax field.
Mister, one thing is coming here, your plan did not, did not indicate that this was a tax-exempt facility. Anything that I, we have found in the submission. The redevelopment plan of the city of, of the city of Ventnor, basically, which is, the redevelopment plan, the redevelopment plan goals and objectives of the Northeast redevelopment plan specifically stated in there that the return for redevelopment of the area to economic productivity and to enable the residents and taxpayers of the city of Ventnor to benefit from significant new revenue generated from tax payments and/or payments in lieu of taxes. Now, I need you to address that statement, or if you'd like to see a copy of it, and we'll be very happy to provide you with a copy of it. Because this is something, I guess, the board is not, was not prepared to discuss this evening, or I, well, we'll discuss it. And knowing the implications in here about that, and whether we have the, whether we have the purview to grant that to you with, with the tax-exempt status, that's one question I have to, I'm having to try to make research now, is whether we can grant that to you without a prior approval from the city. So I just want to keep everything online and on target, so that nothing erroneous is done here.
I appreciate that, of course. I'm not making the connection maybe that you're making, though, as to the board's ability or not to consider an application for a use which is not a permitted use, which clearly, you know, that's within your purview, simply based on the identity of the applicant.
Well, it's not the identity of the applicant, it's the, it's the, in fact, it's far from that. It's actually, it's actually, it has to do with the redevelopment plan itself and the goals and objectives, and then whether, whether or not, as a board, we can overrule the financial, the financial status of the taxing power. And so that's one thing I have to research now, about, trying to get an answer on now, to see if that would, that might, that's within our group. You are not being, we are, you are not in any way, shape, or form being identified as a different individual. It's the function of, of our regulations and what you're attempting to do, and it's very simple. And if we had prior notice of this, I could have had this researched already.
Well, the reason we didn't get prior notice is because I'm not aware that there is a legal significance to the fact that it's a not-for-profit. If they own the land, for example, and propose no development, then, you know, they would stay, would be allowed to do that, then it's the fact that they are a not-for-profit.
I don't know the answer, but I have here a code, a redevelopment plan, and I have other aspects in here. And I want to be sure that we're doing everything correctly, so that, and here, I usually would have this, if I knew ahead of time, we'd have this researched for you.
You are seeing, indeed, variance from uses that are supposed to be there, or desirable there, if you're asking for something totally different. So we have to be convinced that what's being proposed really can fly with what's the development plan and also the master plan. Having open space is a great idea, but how it's going to be used and other aspects of it, we have to tie that in, as the chairman says, with both the redevelopment plan for the area and also the master plan.
Yeah.
I personally feel we need more information from you, on how all this fits together.
In your, pardon me, what's that, Romeo, you complete?
Oh, done.
In your addendum to your application, it's specifically that you found, you put it, "The proposed pocket park is a wonderful amenity for the neighborhood, and at no cost to the city, it meets the redevelopment plan's goals and objections, including." So you're, you're basically saying it's not going to cost the city anything, and you're going to meet the redevelopment plan, everything in the redevelopment plan. And I'm finding that that isn't exactly the case.
Well, the, any application under a redevelopment plan, the redevelopment area, doesn't have to meet each and every goal and objective of the redevelopment plan. You have goals which are, you know, discrete goals, one of which was, you know, the appropriate development of, and we think to stimulate the economic development of the surrounding area with this kind of a use. And that's something, you know, we could certainly debate.
Yeah, we could, aside from the redevelopment plan, it says at no cost to the city. And that is aside from the redevelopment plan. And that's why I was kind of shocked when I found out that it was a tax-exempt status. And I would have had, had, I say, I had a research done on this matter. And I think your plan, I think what you're doing is a wonderful thing. And I would like to see it work together, but I've got to be very careful here. And if we have to, we may have to wait for, I have to have this checked, and to see, determine whether our board has the power to grant a use variance which would trigger this. And, and that is something, because we do have a financial component in our master plan. And our financial components are something we have to work with also, and we are guided by our master plan. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, and, and I don't have a defined way. I like what you do, don't get me wrong, at all. And I'm trying to find the most equitable way to do it and get it done one time.
I understand what you're saying, and I understand, given your view of information in front of you, your hesitation. I would note the, if in fact, the reference in the redevelopment plan to encouraging ratables, tax ratables, say, if that was an absolute requirement for every development, then you would never have anything developed by any non-taxable, not-for-profit entity of any kind. You wouldn't have a church locating anywhere, you wouldn't have, you know, whatever other recognized not-for-profit public groups, you know, a club for some, clubhouse for, you know, one of our veterans or civic organizations, you wouldn't have those things.
Well, we're not talking about those things.
I understand we're not, but just as a general principle, I don't.
We're also not talking about what it would take to, the environmental conditions that would cause the not building of the Panama Canal either. But in here, let's, let's go back to the point is, I didn't get, we didn't get advance notice of this, and your documents say had no cost to the city.
And the meaning of that, so it's clear, there's no deception intended, the meaning was that the city would not have to contribute anything to the maintenance or upkeep of it or its development, that this would be, as most parks are public parks.
Yeah, and that would be, that's beautiful, that's fit, that's what we'd love to see. But when you, when you lose your tax, the tax base is well out of it, you're actually paying, the city is actually paying for the operation of the park too.
Well, the city may also be gaining from the fact that this kind of development can have synergistic effect.
You can be 100% right, sir, I'm not going to dispute you on that either, and.
Gentlemen, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation here in New Jersey did a comprehensive look at pocket parks around the country and economic data. What it was trying to find out was whether they were energizers and enhancers of ratables of all that surrounded them. And in 2010, in a magazine, Mountain Trails, American Trails Magazine, a highlighted article of their findings was published. And I just really encourage folks to go and do a look-up of that, because they found that the impact on ratables was the most favorable when a pocket park was put in a dense suburban area, and it sort of petered out when a park area was in a suburban profiled area with access to more ample land at its periphery. So it's worthwhile taking a look at, just because they are, they're, they're synergy, I call them synergies or buddies, because things happen around them that are very favorable to the tax profile and the desirability of certain neighborhoods.
My problem with proposal is not, you know, the aesthetics is great, and I agree with you. Anyone that lives next to a park, their value is increased because they're next to a park. That's not, what we're talking about here is not a park. We're talking about a private property that's going to be used for somebody that's going to pay a fee to come in on this private property. I know you're saying that it's a nonprofit, but basically, it's not open for the public, it's not vendors', you know, it's really a private entity, be it nonprofit or not, that isn't a park. It really is a site that's going to be providing activity. You can come in and enjoy the amenities that this site provides, but it's not a park.
Why don't we do this, why don't we move on to the planning testimony? And let's hear, let's hear this whole thing, while we, let's hear what you, the witness will have to say.
Which I'll do in one second, but let me ask the unclear. Is the concern about the reference language in redevelopment plan based on the possibility that that would be a jurisdictional issue for the board? Or that it's a factor that the board would need to consider in its evaluation of the D variances? Or both?
I'm working on that right now.
I don't believe it's a jurisdictional issue.
It's not a, okay, it's in there, and we have to look at it, and we'll have to weigh that with everything that goes in with the rest of the zone. So that's why I want to move on to the jurisdictional requirements. I mean, to the, to the, your planner, and discuss what's happening with the rest of it.
Sure, sure, good evening, board members. Again, Jason Shulow, S.C.I.U.L.L.O., professional planner and engineer, licensed in New Jersey. I've practiced professionally for almost 20 years, licensed in engineering for 13, planning for three.
I'm sorry, you're just gonna have to speak.
Sorry.
I'm gonna have to slow down just a little bit, okay?
This is Lance Leder.
Thank you.
All right, so, sorry. Practicing professionally for about 18 years, a little over 18 years, actually. Licensed in engineering for 13 years, and licensed in planning for three years. I started my company in January, prior to that, I worked for a couple other firms in the area. Grew up in South Jersey, born in Atlantic City, grew up in Agarva Township. Currently live in Epsique, and my office is in Margate. I've been working in this area my whole life. This is actually the first time before this board, it's probably the only one in Atlantic County that I haven't been before. I've been recognized as a, an expert in the field of planning and engineering in multiple locations all over the state.
We'll recognize your credentials.
Thank you. Yeah, and from this distance, it may not be great, and I didn't think that we would be behind the lines, so I apologize. But I prepared an exhibit that was not submitted as part of the application, so we'll probably have to mark it. This is a site location rendering that will generally show the surrounding area. And from that distance, it's just gonna look like a lot of rooftops, which is really what it is. So on this plan, which we've entitled a site location plan, right, pretty much right dead center is the location of the park, which is.
I'm gonna call that A2J, sorry, site location plan.
Site location plan, exhibit A2. And as Todd had mentioned earlier, it's between South Oakland Ave and South Nashville Avenue, which are generally in the middle of the plan here. Ventnor Avenue is shown, the top part of the site here to the north. The, the purpose of this rendering was to generally show the board that the majority of the surrounding area is developed with, be it residential buildings or commercial buildings, with really no open space except things that are intentionally, or unintentionally vacant. Like I mentioned, the piece across the street that's been approved for some development. To give a little more bearing here too, starting on the western end, we have Wawa on this edge here, the movie theater, the, the site in the middle here is mentioned, the veterinary office here, and then Way of Life Church is directly, well, not directly next door, but one lot over. The three buildings that surround the property, the one on the corner of Oakland and Ventnor is a three-story building, or, yeah, excuse me, that one's three-story, and then this building, fronting Nashville, is four-story, this one behind is three-story, they're large in comparison to the surrounding, which, going to the west, these residential units here are single-family, two-story buildings. From a, you heard most of the testimony relative to the operation of the facility, so I won't touch on the detail, but I'm gonna provide the proofs that are necessary, required by laws the chairman had mentioned. So there are generally three pieces of relief that we're gonna request tonight. The first one being the use variance, which I'm very well aware. The second one, I'm not sure if it's actually going to be required to be a variance, because it's an existing condition, but it'll be for the lot depth, as previously mentioned. The ordinance requires 90 feet, we're at 87 and change, and then the fence height. So I'll hit proofs for all of those. So for the first one, the use variance, this is a variance required pursuant to Section 70D1 of the municipal land use law, for a use not specifically permitted in the zone. The, this board has jurisdiction based on case law and obviously the land use law. And through case law, you've heard probably testimony in the past about how, in order to grant a use variance, the board has to find that special reasons are provided. Now, special reasons isn't specifically defined in any of the code or in the law, but there's case law that generally recognizes it to be, or broadly interpreted, to be the reasons which advance purposes of zoning, as enumerated in the law. There's also three categories in which these types of special reasons can be provided. The, the first one is when things are inherently beneficial. There's specific uses defined as inherently beneficial, such as schools and churches and nonprofits, similar to those, public housing, things like that. Open space should also be in that category, but it's very unique to have an open space project need a use variance. Because as mentioned previously, most open space projects are publicly, not just funded, but administered. This open space project, as previously mentioned, will be privately owned, privately maintained. Quasi-public was the term used. Now you see that it doesn't mean anyone can just walk in off the street, but there will be the ability to use this park if you're not necessarily an owner of it. So that's where the quasi-public terminology would come in. The second category, they could be used to define special reasons, if there's an undue hardship, and not the undue hardship like you'd see for some of the C variances, this is a higher level of proof, but this site wouldn't have that issue. And then the third one is if the site is shown to be particularly well-suited for the use, which we believe that it is. So in addition to it possibly being considered inherently beneficial because it's open space, which advances many goals of zoning, which I'll describe in a second here, the site is particularly well-suited as well. In addition to that, which is termed the positive criteria, we also have to provide negative criteria, or addressing the negative criteria, which generally means that we don't create a negative impact of the surrounding area, which is, you know, the real impact, what you feel. And then there's a second part of that, that says we can negatively impact the zoning ordinance, zone plan, or master plan, which generally means that a use variance is appropriate, instead of something like a change in zoning. And we believe because this project is so unique, that a use variance is definitely warranted in this case. So I mentioned for the positive criteria, that I do think that this could be considered inherently beneficial, but, you know, belts and suspenders, I'm also gonna tell you why it's particularly well-suited for this use. And part of this exhibit will do that. So the actual test in case law is to prove that the public benefits because of the community's need for this use. So as you saw on this, see on this plan, for, you know, a minimum of five blocks, there's two long blocks to get to, you know, the best open space anybody could have, which is our beach. But that's obviously public and not organized as a park, per se, such as this, but that's two long blocks south. Then there's another small pocket of passive open space that DEP, I think, was required to put in, or you guys were required to put in when you did, what was it, a check valve diversion, some kind of stormwater system, and that's, I think, Winchester and Little Rock, maybe, it's a real small.
Lily Park, yes.
Yeah, so that, that is similar in nature as far as it being passive, but that's clearly, it's not fenced open to the public, you're right on the bulkhead. It's not necessarily not kid-friendly, but it's not somewhere you just let them run wild. So, but that's five or six blocks, or really three blocks down, two blocks up, it's a pretty good distance away. So for, we'll say, the walkable distance that's conveniently walkable, there is an enormous amount of residential structures and residents that are here that really don't have open space. In this case, as you heard previously, it's not wide open to the public, but it's still open space that's available for public use. Should it be, like, you know, the examples used already, or like a business association networking function, or as mentioned, weddings, something along those lines, that gives you another opportunity that doesn't exist today. I feel that that's a need that can be filled with this use. So as mentioned previously too, this is, it's, there's gonna be activity, but it's not an active park, like, without, there's no playground equipment, there's the splash pad, which we've done a couple of, and they're very successful, they're a lot of fun, kids really seem to enjoy them, they don't use much water, it's a really environmentally responsible addition to the park. As mentioned, you know, having the gray water be recycled to be used for landscaping, you're gonna spray it on the ground no matter what, why not have some fun with it first? It's a good idea. So this, this, this use provides something, as I mentioned, that's not currently in the, in this district, it's not in this region, the North Beach section of Ventnor. And as Paula had said, this will be not necessarily the bookend of this end of Ventnor, but it's one of the first things you'll see coming on Ventnor Ave, that's not just the residential or storefront that's right on the road. This, this will create interest, hopefully create some activity where people know of this space, come here, stay here longer, spend some money on, on Ventnor Avenue. But we don't generate any for parking necessarily, because the user groups that are here will be local. Some of them will be friends, obviously, but there's public parking in this region that, as you guys know, all up and down Ventnor Ave, that can be utilized. And since there isn't a parking requirement in the ordinance, we feel that that advances purposes of zoning as well. So you think of the alternatives, how could you get this open space otherwise? There's really only two ways to do it, you leave Ventnor, go somewhere else that has it, which we don't want to have happen. Or you try to create it in your own yard, and as you guys know, you know, there's not a whole lot of space in a lot of people's backyards in Ventnor, so you really can't create something like this to enjoy in many places locally. But this group has taken it upon themselves to spend their own money on this, to give something that's a public amenity generally. I understand it's not open all the time, but as mentioned previously, you know, we have competing needs, we always have people pulling in different directions. I understand it's not open all the time, but as mentioned previously, you know, we have competing needs, we always have people pulling different directions. It concerns our security. So we address that with a higher fence and limited hours. But then by doing that, you obviously don't have people being able to come in whenever they want. So that, some people view negatively, some people view as a positive. We're trying to strike that balance. So as previously mentioned too, Paula said it sat vacant for ten years, and the pictures she provided show that it was previously developed with buildings that were demolished in 2009. There was also an approval on this site circa 2008 for residential development. I don't know if I'm gonna say the name right. Is it Trey Sorrell? Something like that?
Trey Sorrell.
Trey Sorrell. And that didn't, that wasn't just on this lot, and other lots incorporated into it, but these four that are part of this application were a portion of that. That development obviously did not go forward. And I should also mention that Paula's group has tried to purchase other property around the facility, around this park to, like as an example, for the lot depth, to try to gain more depth, but we weren't able to secure any more property. So what we wanna have this end up being is obviously a beautiful, well-kept portion of Vettner that doesn't exist today. On a lot that's underutilized in an area that could use open space, because with these large buildings and this density, this building, or this use reduces that density, it creates someplace for people to go that, that right now, there's no open space. So you're talking about walking dogs and everything, although they're not going to be directed to this park. Right now, people walk their dogs down the street, they're on a leash. It happens, it's totally legal. Now, there's a place that maybe they don't necessarily have to walk the dog all over, but we're not specifically saying it's a dog park. This provides a lot of opportunity that just today doesn't exist. So the specific purposes of zoning, that I think that this application advances, and I'm gonna reference these as the actual purposes enumerated in the code, in the land use law, and they're lettered. There's five or six that provide, or five that specifically mention open space, which the first one, to provide adequate light air and open space, this is Purpose A, I'm sorry, Purpose C, I apologize. This falls squarely within that, because exactly what we're doing is providing open space. And there's Purpose E, which is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and preservation of the environment. As I mentioned, this use is gonna reduce the density of the area, although these lots are not part of a larger development per se, as far as actually having ownership. Clearly, you know, if there's whatever amount of residents are around this piece, if we were to drop another residential building in the middle of that, it'd create a higher density. Not that it's not allowable, but this reduces the density, which is a positive. This next purpose is G, which is to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. This use creates open space, it's privately funded, as mentioned, which this purpose wants both public and private. The state policies are that this type of use, or this type of development, which is privately funded, open space not be inhibited, or, you know, held up. And as I mentioned, it fills a need that this neighborhood right now can't provide. And all Vettner doesn't have anything like this, it's so unique, I don't know if anywhere really even has this, except for, you mentioned Boise, Idaho, places like that where not to... Catch him, sorry. So there's opportunity here that we can fill this need. And then there's Purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. You heard from Todd, and Paula both, the thought that went into this and the arrangement, and how this will be aesthetically pleasing and an enormous upgrade to what's out there now. Not to say that a permitted use wouldn't do the same thing, but the way that this will do it is very unique and advances this purpose of zoning specifically. And then also Purpose J, to promote the conservation of historic, licensed districts, open space, energy resources, and valuable natural resources in the state to prevent urban sprawl and degradation of the environment through improper use of land. We mentioned again, this conserves open space, creates open space. And last get material we're using is going to be drought-tolerant native species. We're going to reclaim the water that we use in the spray ground. Everything in this park fits squarely within these purposes of zoning. It's also, you mentioned the redevelopment plan goals, I wanna point out, you mentioned the one issue with the taxes. That's one of the goals about picking that up, but there are many, two pages worth. So I'm just gonna hit the ones that we definitely meet, and also point out that, like, one of, an opportunity, or, I'm sorry, an example of how not all developments will meet every one of these goals. One of them is to create housing opportunities for senior citizens. Clearly not every job is gonna meet that goal, but it's one goal within this plan. The ones that we meet are to reduce the overall residential density of the area, that's the very first goal. Next one will be to reduce the amount of building cover and impervious cover, and clearly, open space does that. To create zoning and development provisions to create additional open space. Although the zoning doesn't specifically permit it, the goal of the redevelopment plan was to create development opportunity and zoning standards for open space. The next one is to increase the overall amount of airlight and open space in both residential and commercial areas, again, we're doing exactly that. And the last one is to establish community facilities and services that will enhance the overall quality of life of Vettner Residence and its neighboring areas. We feel, as I mentioned, that this provides a unique, something unique to Vettner that will not only enhance the area, and Paula mentioned studies that were specific to pocket parks. Pocket parks have been done all over, you've probably seen on TV, they have things where, you know, people in urban areas buy lots, don't know what to do with them in the very beginning, rather than leave them sit vacant, they create community gardens or other things. Rutgers has a program where they, around their campus, are taking these lots and converting them into open space, similar to this. Atlantic City, we have a bunch of little street ends and little pieces, you know, some successful, some not, but they were publicly funded. This one is a very similar approach, but again, privately funded. And the statement about it not costing the city any money, as Rick mentioned, that was meant to be the construction cost. I guess an argument could be made that anything that doesn't create the highest and best use, as far as the tax rateable goes, could negatively impact the city pursuant, like, not every job is gonna create the maximum amount of taxes on a specific lot that it can. In this case, you know, like the church next door, this open space, there's gonna be some non, or, I'm sorry, nonprofits that do not generate tax revenue. But my understanding, and, you know, and Leo, you could probably jump in too, so case law says very specifically that taxes cannot be used as a reason to approve or deny an application. I understand where you're coming from, you may think you don't have jurisdiction, but in our experience, you absolutely do. And there's, I couldn't find it, but I know there's case law that says that, you know, saying that something doesn't generate enough taxes is definitely not a reason to deny an application. In addition to the positive criteria, we also have to, as I mentioned previously, address the negative criteria. For this use variance, there's two prongs. One of them is that we will not have a negative impact on the surrounding area, general welfare of the neighborhood. This open space use will add, it'll be a positive impact to the area, it'll make it look better, it'll make this vacant ground safer. We're gonna have the eight-foot-high fences mentioned for security, it will be maintained properly, securely. It will absolutely not have a negative impact on the surrounding area. And as far as negative impact to the zone plan, zoning ordinance, or master plan, as I mentioned, by this board granting a use variance, it will not usurp the governing body's ability to create zoning standards. This is not something that is typical, probably not foreseen when the code was written. So it's appropriate, in this case, to grant a use variance, in my opinion. And then the, I'll just end with a quick statement on that, about how the complements the surrounding area in that, aside from aesthetically, it creates a space that's usable by pedestrians, it doesn't generate traffic, doesn't generate any odors or noise beyond what would be expected in any other semi-urban environment. The facility will be utilized for special events, as mentioned, but those special events won't be anything that goes till, you know, midnight for a concert ending. I'll say crazy, but anything that's beyond what would be expected in a public setting in this portion of Vettner. It will be reasonable, subdued, and well-controlled. There were questions about if speakers are permanently mounted, none of that kind of equipment will be there permanently. It'll all be brought in, there's gonna be, you know, obviously, some cabling and wires to make sure that it all can just be set up quickly, but nothing will be left outside with music playing all night, nothing like that. The lights will be very subdued, night sky-friendly, not creating a lot of pollution. It's very well-thought-out. And Paula, I was, you know, my involvement in this job up to this point has been really the planning and engineering we're just now starting to get in discussions about. I'm excited about this project because it's something so unique. There's a lot of opportunity here that I think that this board should recognize for sure. The other two pieces of relief that we need, well, I should actually say that it's my opinion, my professional opinion, that granting of this use variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public, general welfare, the zone plan, zoning ordinance, or master plan. The other piece of relief, well, the one I mentioned about the lot depth, if that's not part of the use variance and the D1 variance, if we were to request a separate bulk variance for that, I would call it a classic C1 hardship variance. In the code, in the land use law, you hear us say C1 and C2, there are different sections of the land use law. C1 being that if the site has a particular condition, whether it be shape of the lot, depth of the lot, narrowness, topographic conditions, creates a hardship to meet the zoning standard, there's relief provisions within the land use law that could allow the board to grant that relief. One of them, obviously, is the zoning requires a ninety-foot lot depth, the existing lot is eighty-seven and change. We didn't create, we're not creating that condition, I'll say it is what it is. We've tried to grow up to buy other ground to get more land to meet that condition, and we're unable to do it. So I think that that one falls squarely within a C1 hardship variance. The other variance relief that we're requesting is the fence height, and this will term a C2, the flexible C, where we have to show that the benefits outweigh any potential detriments to granting of the variance, or by granting of the variance. So the, what we heard when Paula was going around the neighborhood was people were concerned about security. The eight-foot fence is solely for that purpose, to create an additional measure for security, it's a deterrent, as you said, sir, it's, you know, you've seen it. People can, if you give them an opportunity, they'll do whatever they're gonna do, but an eight-foot fence deters most people from trying to get into the site. Short of doing something more than that, we think that's the best opportunity to create security that we need in this facility. There's also provisions, excuse me, for security cameras and other measures like that, but the fence itself, for security, we request that relief, being the benefit of security outweighing a potential detriment. I also wanna point out, I mentioned the buildings are three and four-story all around it, and an eight-foot fence will not be out of scale with that surrounding area. It's gonna be wide open with the pickets, you'll be able to see straight through it, to be able to see all the landscaping, and the landscaping will similarly be taller than that fence, at maturity, for sure, where the fence won't look like the dominating feature of the site. It'll be a part of it, it'll be visible, but it's not gonna be a visual, it won't distract from the visual appeal of the facility. So we think that that mitigates the impact of the eight-foot height as the nature of the fence material and the way that it's structured. So based on the previous testimony, what I just said now, I think the granting of the variance for fence height for this unique use will not negatively impact general welfare, excuse me, general welfare, the public, the zone plan, or the zoning ordinance. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I do wanna point out that pocket parks are specifically mentioned in the redevelopment area, and are actually, one was designated for a couple blocks down. So it's, I guess, a designated use for the redevelopment area, a recommended use?
The, and was that, that was, it was gonna be publicly funded?
I wouldn't say that.
No, no, I'm saying it's...
It was mentioned as a use.
Yeah.
It was actually supposed to be, it was parcel one in the redevelopment plan, between Little Rock and Waymouth Avenues, between Vettner and Winchester.
Little Rock and Waymouth. Where it was, I'm sorry, where was it again?
Between Little Rock and Waymouth, and Vettner and Winchester.
So that would be the block behind the movie theater?
Yes.
There is a strip of open ground that's there that I understood from talking to a developer for that, was part of that parcel they were acquiring. I don't know if the current operators acquired it, but if...
It was a parking lot.
Yeah, it's part of the parking lot, right, yeah. But thank you, Roger.
Yeah, the movie theater.
Yeah.
Frank's home.
Yeah, I thought that was the case.
It was mentioned some time ago.
It was in the redevelopment zone. They broke it up by parcels.
Yeah, it was designated as parcel...
Right, it was parcel one. So flip towards the back, there's a map.
Okay, designated as commercial mixed use?
Yes.
All right, and Rick, while you're looking, do you want me to touch on any of the other pieces from the review letter relative to design standards?
Yeah, say it to me.
Okay. In the letter that was prepared, most of the comments, as Rick had mentioned, we were gonna be okay with, but there's a, I'll say, not generic, it's not the way I would put it, but comment one on page three of the letter says, "The applicant shall testify as to whether or not all design standards in Section 3.4 of the redevelopment plan will be met, if any waivers are requested." Going through the standards, which, excuse me, I'll grab that one. Section 3.4, starting on page eighteen of the redevelopment plan, most of them, you know, the goals of the plan, which I'll also say that one of the goals in there was related to open space as well. Most of them probably don't apply, being things like specific architectural controls, building location. We do, the gazebo and the shed, as mentioned, will need buffer relief, and possibly setback relief, but I think that the setback requirements were the principal structures, but if we do need that relief, we also request that variance relief for similar reasons that I stated earlier. The benefits outweighing the detriment, being that we can provide a landscape buffer that will greatly enhance this, that perimeter buffer area, even though it's not the eight feet that is required in the code, or in the ordinance.
Are you into site plan, or are you into design standards?
Well, the design standards apply to the site plan. It's in the section 3.4 in the, page nineteen, and it has setback requirements, saying ten feet from Vettner Ave, Atlantic Ave. I don't see anything about side setbacks, so that came from a different section of the code.
Yep, we don't have a site plan in front of us, so...
Well, the one that Todd provided without the dimensions, that's the one we're referring to. So going down the list, though, vehicular access doesn't apply, parking and loading won't apply. The landscaping standards, we will meet. And there's also, just to be clear, there's applicability for planning requirements for urban conditions. It only applies if you have fifty percent site coverage, which we will not have, will be less than fifty percent, so they won't apply. And then the only thing really left is lighting and architectural controls. The lighting standards within the redevelopment plan are very specific, it says, "Use this fixture or something that looks just like it." And it's a teardrop fixture that, being that the way that it's shaped, there's two options, it's a teardrop and then a globe, and they project light more than just straight down. We wanna ask for waiver relief to use a fixture that will project the light in a downward direction, rather than something that will be equip create glare, such as the one that's in the plan. And that's simply a product of the age of the plan. At the time when this was adopted, they didn't have the same technology for lighting that we do today. So general testimony will be that we will meet just about all the design standards, barring the lighting, and then the building control for setbacks, if that is part of the design standards, which it sounds like it might be.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me add one thing, this might be more of a question or clarification. There's a, the section Rick had mentioned about the sidewalk width, and Roger, this is on page thirty-one of the redevelopment plan, item D at the very top.
Right.
Says sidewalks adjacent to Vettner Ave shall be widened to twenty feet in width in order to facilitate pedestrian circulation and to increase public spaces. I thought that was intended to be at the corners, but the way that it reads, it could be interpreted to mean all of them.
I recommend we're casting a waiver for that.
Yes, yeah, we don't wanna remove any parking and have a little bump out of wider sidewalks, especially since we're creating space that brings off the sidewalk and not creating any issues. So, yeah, we wanna request a waiver from that section as well, please. And then signage, we'll have a sign at the site, but it's not gonna be anything that's outside of what the code permits. And we can provide that on a detailed site plan as a condition of approval, which I wanna say too, that, not to make light of the comments, they're very good comments, but most of them can be addressed pretty easily through a detailed design plan that we can provide as a condition of approval. And we would request that, I'll say, I'll work it out with Roger, but we could provide that plan as a condition of approval. If there's anything that I guess isn't necessarily matching the design standards, or there's some ambiguity or a question about it, we can come back to the board. We wanna ask for relief from a formal site plan approval as a condition of this approval. We wanna have, we wanna ask for a site plan waiver, and I can provide a detailed plan as a...
Thank you.
-as a condition of approval.
And the reason being?
I mean, there's really, it's, it's simple information as far as grading, it's not really gonna make a difference to the way that it looks, if there's specific issues that the board has questions on, then I can try to answer now, but if it's just for the purpose of submitting a plan that Roger's gonna review, what we're asking is that we don't have to come before the board again, unless you really want to see us, we'll, we'll do it.
It's my understanding that the board would like to see a site plan.
Okay. Understood.
Again, based on the fact that these are contact images, I think the board really wants to see what gazebo's gonna be there, what shed's gonna be there, where's it gonna be, we want to see dimensions of the plans.
Okay.
Instead of-
Understood.
-kinda guessing where they are, I mean, not that they're gonna be drastic changes, but I think the board has, they want to see that.
Okay.
Jay, this was resolved in the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna have a site plan.
Okay. Thank you.
I have nothing further to add.
No? Let's move it along. Let's move it along.
All right, thank you.
Just one further question, concerning, we're having an area now, pocket parks for similar type uses, it's in Melsburg, the common area, I'm not finding that the, the 2001 plant with 2007 amendments for commercial mixed use zone, but I see in one of the residential zones, the residential redevelopment one-
Right.
It does anticipate one of the mixed uses would be parks, playgrounds, and other publicly operated, or at least recreational uses, recreational uses and facilities, so, it seems by its terms, that particularly in that portion of redevelopment area was anticipated to be public, public owned and operated. Just to differentiate us, and, you know, it's not, it's not the kind, what we're proposing to do isn't something that, you know, theoretically, we could have done in a different portion or in a different parcel within redevelopment track, without having come to get to say it, we. That is all the testimonies that we have, so we hear from the public, and there may be some follow-up responses to those comments.
Okay, we're gonna open up to the board members, do you have any further questions at this point? I'm gonna, at this time, is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Can you just state your name and address, and I'll swear you in?
Have to bring this way down. Name is Michael Weinroth, addresses are multiple, I own an office building with my wife at 5001 Ventnor Avenue, which houses my law firm, and I also own my, our house at 5 South Marion Avenue.
That's good, though.
Hey, it's-
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to state that it's, it's very difficult to come up here as a non-lawyer speaking, so I have to get over that first, but I also'd like to state that I have absolutely no connection with the charity, with any of the members, I'm here as a resident and a business owner only, and, sorry, but next to the movie theater, I think this would be the greatest thing to happen to the city of Ventnor, and specifically to our area of North Beach, because I live there, I work there, I may never, ever have a personal reason to use this park, but I know my neighbors, friends, family, people in the area, people with younger children, religious organizations, groups, I'm a member of the North Beach Civic Association, I'm sure they will be able to use it, it, just the possibilities of what this will do to our community, right across the street from the movie theater, I mean, the movie theater, I'm sorry, it's way up here in terms of number one change that's going to occur in our neighborhood. I love living in a city, we're a very, very tiny city, and having a park of our own in the city, the way this has been described, for people to use for various uses, it's, it's just, it's phenomenal that we have a resident that is putting up her own money to provide services that our town may not be able to afford. I don't think we should be questioning this. This is a, "Thank you very much, where do I sign?" type of a proposition. We need to move forward to progress in our little city. This is step two to be able to do that. I do not see a downside, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know you personally, I don't know where you live, if I had one problem with living in North Beach and working in North Beach, it's the issue that you brought up, trash. Do you know how much trash I pick up every day? My wife picks up 10 times what I pick up. Since this fence went up, which is very temporary, that's the only block that doesn't have trash on it on Ventnor Avenue. I walk into my office, 5001 Ventnor Avenue, right at the corner of Ventnor and Austin, my wife walks the dog at 7:00 AM, she picks up trash on both sides. I get to the office later, I pick up trash on both sides. It's horrible. That's not going to be our problem, because we can see that just from the temporary fence that's been up the last three or four weeks. I don't have any concern with that, but I think the, the young families with children, the religious organizations, all of the neighborhood organizations, the groups, I think this is phenomenal. I, I, I think we should just move on this and let, I mean, the, the timing, we understand, because of the weather, let's move on, I don't think it's as restrictive as you are. We're talking about holiday plans here. I don't think it's gonna be four to six months, I think it's gonna be a larger use.
Let's not single out members of the board, they can ask any question they wish.
I didn't say, I didn't-
I, I'm not sure what you're doing, so, I just, as a matter of policy, we don't do that, so, you're, you're going fine, I appreciate your comments, please keep going.
Okay, I'm not sure what you were-
Okay, I just was concerned, we don't, you're fine, go ahead.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, I think that there's a much greater use time-wise than you're implying with the four to six months, because, first of all, I think all of us full-time residents know, what's the best time to be in Ventnor? Right now. So, the fall, second best, spring, that's going to cover with the summer, so you're talking about three out of the four seasons, and if you're having holiday parties with all of the lightings, I think you're gonna be at least 10 months, if not year-round, on something like this. I, I, I just think this is a great idea that has private interests footing the bill for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Say your name and address, please.
Good morning or afternoon, or good evening of any role day. My name is Norman Klinger, 1 South Oxford Avenue, at the corner of Ventnor and Oxford. I've owned that house since 1992.
I just have to swear you in, do you swear affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
And so I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. 92 is when we bought that house, that went out to Oxford, and before that, I went to Atlantic City High, class of 55.
Mr. Klinger, I'm sorry, we're, we're, I'd like you to keep your comments apropos to this, this, this hearing.
I can't hear you.
Please speak to the, to the matter.
You can't hear me?
We're running, we're running a little late this evening, so please speak to the matter, please.
I'm sorry, I have, we're having a problem hearing each other, can you hear me now?
I can hear you very well.
Okay. I want to bring your attention to the playground, a Somerset on the boardwalk. I was one of the people who donated money to build it, it was built with citizen funds, it was built with citizen and city worker effort, and there were doubts and fears about that, and you've had a long experience with it, and I think it's a success. My grandchildren were young enough to play at one time, now they're too old to play, and I have no personal use for it, but I'm happy it's there. It's part of the community, so would this park be a part of the community, which enhances the community, even though it's not a so-called ratable, and I'm familiar with ratables, but as you will hear later in comments about something else, we don't live by, by alone. These sorts of amenities enhance neighborhoods, they enhance values, they attract more people. Look what the North Beach Association did, by taking nothing and creating something as part of the resistance to the development of multi-unit apartments that went down to defeat, after the community came together and stayed together, and this just builds on that community spirit for that section of Ventnor, which I think has proven to be a huge, citizen-inspired success. So, I know Paula, I know a lot of other people, I have no vested interest in any of this, I will probably never use the park, but I think that's part of what a city needs, and I hope you will approve it with the fewest difficulties possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am.
State your name and address, and I'll swear you in.
I'm Eve Barker, I own the property 1 South Nashville, which is right on the corner.
And do you swear affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could you pu- pull the mic down to yourself? Thank you. I also am thankful for Paula, for making the space available, but I do have the same kind of concerns that the councilman said. I also used to own the property that, where the Ventnor is, and this is a very, there are a lot of undesirable people that hang around there, and I don't see any safety, I mean, I don't see how, it has to be, that it has to be lighting all the time, in the wintertime, and at night, and my other concern was about the, the idea of having the pool. I don't see how that, that could be very expensive, to change the waters, keep it clean, and maybe it'd be better just to have it open, like maybe do something with the Audubon Society, where you have, where, um, attract butterflies or something else, because the changing of the water would, would have these different undesirables, I don't, I would think that maybe we should consider other options. And I also wanted to ask to make sure that there's setbacks on the property from, the regular setbacks of five feet from the line of the property to my property on the side, if you can make sure that's happening. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
First, I gotta ask a question, am I allowed to ask a question? Leo, as, as a member of the planning board-
Do you have any objections that Mr. Dulugre?
No.
Okay. Mr. Wise, just state your name and address, and I'll swear you in.
Michael Reason, 326 North Dorset Avenue.
And you swear affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I did.
Thank you.
So, how I'm gonna address this is half planning board member and half advocate for the neighborhood and business owner. Non-smoking, will the mon- I'm gonna just run, run off a few quick questions, because I want to get out of here, I mean, get, let it go on. Non-smoking, will the monitor be directed right to Ventnor City Police Department? Had no problem with that eight-foot fence, because you need to protect what's in there. Sidewalk suggestion, if it goes from 20 to 10, do we lose our trees? If it goes to, if it stays at 20, would you sell bricks with names on it for a fundraiser? Have you heard of mango grass? I've just discovered it. I've just discovered it, no maintenance.
We're adding trees, that's in the site.
I saw that, but if you drop from 20 to 10, or the tree's staying there? Rick, sorry, if you, we'll get back to the taxes. So, you have five years to determine if it can sustain itself, how long will it take to figure out? How much it costs to sustain itself? Will it take a year?
For it to operate a year after it's built down.
Yes, okay. And the number of people, the limit of number of people that would be allowed in there?
Oh, we're gonna ask the park department for an occupancy rate, once, you know, I feel comfortable having that.
And I, I do believe that every single thing in that park that is on this picture can be raised privately, and just put a little plaque next to that person's name, because that whole thing could be done, if Marsha could do it, you could do it.
We're gonna offer naming rights to these others who are-
Okay, all right.
They have bricks, maybe rights to splash ban.
Okay, and then the last worst question that I think is the taxes. The fact that the city's giving up the taxes for a charity that is gonna benefit the whole neighborhood, would there be consideration for a donation to the city to help offset some of that? And I think all the other questions are good, I know it against it a little later, so-
I'm just gonna see what.
To compensate for a little bit of the taxes lost.
We've been paying, we have a planning for tax exemption as previously as we put that, which was upon deed over to the February marketing, prepaying our upcoming taxes, so, um, but, they wanna have, they wanna have a holiday rate, use that park to, you know, use the gazebo to kick off a holiday point, starts at the four in the town, and then works its way down to the fire station.
I like that, yeah. Include, include everybody.
Just as no fee charge, no fee charge for use of the park by the city.
Yeah, well, great job, great presentation, I know you did a lot of hard work, and I know you've been working on this for years, you mentioned it to me about a year and a half ago, and I knew when you were gonna speak, it was gonna take all night, so, thank you very much for doing what you're doing.
Jay, Jay, you came with the, the right area.
My page's good.
All right. One, one thing, Mr. McAbell, is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
State your name and address, and I'll swear you in.
I'm Pastor James McAbell from Way of Life Church, 5000 Ventnor Avenue.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I just want to address the board and just say that I think this is a great idea, and I just want to echo what Attorney Michael Weinroth just said, that there's things that are happening in our neighborhood, as a church, we feel that we need, we, we have been making, trying to make changes in our community, community to improve our community. We are a tax-exempt organization, but beyond being tax-exempt, we've been giving to the city, I think this move will give more into the city, rather than just the taxes that are being collected from the property. I think, we feel that it will enhance the quality of life in our town, and so, if, if it would be possible, we just feel that it can just be passed and given approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? At this time, the public portion of this application is now closed. Mr. Dulugre.
We have a, just a couple of quick responses to a few of the comments that were just made. The first is that it will be a non-smoking facility, and with respect to the sidewalk width, at 20 feet?
Yes, real quick, wanna explain, answer the question, sidewalk today is 10 feet. The redevelopment plan has language in it about widening the sidewalk potential, but we are asking for a waiver, it's not wide, but we're not gonna change the sidewalk, it's gonna stay at 10 feet, trees will stay, everything will be exactly as it is today, sure sidewalk being approved for these factors.
Thank you, that was all I had with respect to the public comments.
Pardon me?
Excuse me, that was all I had with respect to responses to public.
Okay, thank you. And that, that would be great. As board members, any questions of the applicant? I just have one thing, is, is if you, if you could find a way to incorporate more public use to the, to the park, that would be great. I know you're, you're working very hard on this whole thing, and if you can get a little more public use, I think that would, that'd be a great-
Define public use, you can define public use, I mean, we have concerns about security.
I, I, I understand all those things.
And the merchants wanna do something to trap them, the gate would be open, anybody-
Paula, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone.
Yeah, you come up, I, I don't mean that, go ahead, but I'm just asking that, if, if in your, in your operation, someone if you can do, if you can work that out a little bit, so there's a little more access, if it's possible, you could, just be cognizant of that, please.
We wanna talk about-
I, I know, I know that, I know that.
Talk about it, you're fine.
So, I'm just, I'm just asking that, if at all possible, in your, in your deliberations.
Thank you.
At this time, yes?
My, my concern still goes-
My concern still goes back to a point that was made, that if the funds don't come through, if groups don't come and want to take the park. I view this as a, almost like a private club with an open-space veneer. The open space is desirable in the area. I'm all for it. But what I'm concerned about is the continuation, the maintenance. What I'd like to see, that we ask to be added on, is some kind of plan showing that they will maintain it far beyond the five years, if possible. Because I don't want to see this site deteriorate to something else. Because you said you could sell it if it doesn't work. Well, what are we going to have on that site?
I'm just deciding what the tax laws are about public operating nonprofits.
In conjunction with that, Roman, I think Roger, if you could look at... The idea is, is that just a continuing maintenance, you know, a maintenance plan that continues as long as you own the property. That's what's being looked for. And you could put that into your site plan.
Yeah, I mean, we can, and I think we probably talked about this earlier on. We do plan to have a maintenance plan.
I know.
And be committed to it.
Right.
It really is, though, impossible to project the future. We know where we are right now financially, but five, six, 10 years out, you don't have...
As long as you own the property.
Oh, no, as long as we own it.
Yeah, I know, I know. But you can sell it at any time, so it extinguishes itself. So, that would be the point. Yeah, it's why you own it and operate it and so on. Right, exactly.
If people come to love it.
Right. If they come to love it, you're there for a long time. If they don't, well, you're adios. So, okay, let's get moving here. At this time, board members, any further questions? Anything of Roger? I've thought. Leo, could you charge the board with an affirmative motion for a vote, please?
Yeah, just some brief discussion. Mr. Delugry, I mean, in light of the board making it clear that they want a site plan, I'm inclined just to put forth a motion on the use variance, and we can deal with all these other things? These waivers, lighting plan, when you come back with the site plan, is that your thought?
Not 100 percent. And part of the reason, understanding from the beginning of tonight's hearing that the board would want to see a site plan, we knew that that was a possibility coming in. We did put on our proofs with respect to the couple of variances and design waivers, because we know those are going to be part of the design. That we're not going to be in a position to redesign, for example, with the sidewalk width or with the positioning of the gazebo and the shed. There'd be a lot more detail, obviously, presented on the plans. But the fundamental pieces, the ones that require any kind of bulk variance relief and the side buffer requirements, we know that those pieces are going to be there, so...
Mister, we're going to list them, the waivers this evening as part of the use variance and anything else that's appropriate now. So that when you come back for it, you'll have your menu. So, we're going to do that now.
Alright, thank you.
Do you want to include them?
Yes, I want to include them now.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the conditions as well should be that if during construction, the sidewalk is damaged, that it's replaced.
Oh, yeah, that's, we understood that to be standard.
Okay, now, let's go over it. Roger, you have, and you're ready. We're going to go over a checklist on all these waivers, so let's do it right now. First of all, you're asking for the fence, for the eight-foot fence. You're asking for a three-foot rear yard?
Let's start with the use. It's going to require five affirmative votes. Carmella, seven members will vote. So, it's a motion for use variance approval to permit this pocket park slash open-space use in the commercial mixed-use district, which is also part of the Northeast redevelopment plan, where such a use is not permitted. And they've also requested two C variances technically, which at least the lot depth one, I think, is subsumed into the use variance. But it's, but I'll note them anyway. It's a lot depth of 87.34 feet, where 90 feet is required. And then the fence height of eight feet or six feet is permitted. And now, we have to, where I would appreciate your help is with some of these waivers.
I would say that design waivers specified in the redevelopment plan that are applicable. I don't think you have to name them. Because we have been waiving those.
But how about the sidewalk?
The sidewalk width?
I mean, there was a sidewalk width and the encroachment into the sideyard buffers of the gazebo and the shed.
Did we also agree that there was a setback for the gazebo, where it would be at five feet, and then you need to be at six or eight?
There's nothing about a setback. We talked about a buffer only.
You know, it's just a buffer zone.
Okay.
A buffer, into the buffer only, nothing about a setback.
Jay, didn't you offer some testimony about that?
Yeah, the reason it came up is in the review letter, there's a zoning schedule on page two that has side yard setback, rear yard setback listed. And it's not clear what it said, was I wasn't clear if it was principal structures or any structures.
They have a principal structure.
Correct. So, we don't need setbacks, we leave it as our principal structure.
Okay.
Figuring it went with the use. Correct.
And then, the conditions we're going to oppose is, which I think we can restate on site plan approval, but they're going to provide this maintenance schedule as long as they own the property. Any damage during construction of the sidewalks will be replaced. And all representations made on or by, on or by or on behalf of the applicant during the course of the hearing will be followed. And we can, when the site plan comes back, we can revisit this.
No smoking and things like that.
No smoking, things like that.
Will be done in here. And then, basically, some cameras are hooked up to a monitoring agency so that the police can be alerted for any problems. That could be, that could be done. And that was the, I think, the bulk of what incurred there.
And there was some testimony about taxes, that that's not a relevant consideration as to whether to grant or deny use variance. Whether they're a charitable organization and they're going to apply to the city to become tax-exempt. That shouldn't really factor in your considerations. You should look at the testimony they presented as to the use variance, as to whether you believe it meets the positive and negative criterias and advances the objectives that they attempted to lay out in furtherance of the Northeast redevelopment plan.
So, we're going to consider both D and Cs together?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
We're going to do it in one package, D and Cs.
One vote.
One vote. At this time, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll need a motion and a second. And your reasons, state your reasons for the vote.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Okay, Carmella, please call the roll call vote, please.
Jay Cook?
I'm going to vote yes. This obviously, property has, they've put a great deal of time into it. It potentially is a primer and a builder of other things to happen. And it could bring some good karma into the neighborhood, as well as with the effort and the people that are involved. So, there's a great deal of sincerity in the actions that are being taken. But also, it does intermingle into the redevelopment plan, particularly trying to reduce open space, reduce density and increase open space. And it does jive with our master plan in that it's bringing recreational and other areas into the, and adding air light and improving the quality of life within the city, is what the intent is. And with that in mind, we're getting, we're looking at some symbiotic relationships with our master plan and our ordinances and so on. So, I'm going to vote yes.
Tom McGaddam?
I vote yes. I think it's an excellent idea. It's a, it's a great use for the area. In disrepair, if you will, for the monitoring. I applaud the applicant for their intentions and dedication and hard work in this area. And I'd just like to point out that you, as an applicant, are here for your particular issue. That's great. You represent yourselves. We, as the planning board, represent the entire city. And the reason we ask the question, we ask if the information is not available, it's our duty as board members and the city residents and city taxpayers to ask those questions. Good luck with your project.
Herman Zabi-Hatch?
I vote yes on the D variance. I have no problem with the variance on lot depth. I do have a problem with the fence height.
Really?
I know. I have to say.
And then you got to, if that's the case.
And I am unhappy with the restriction to the public, to the site. I really don't consider this to be a park. It really is a private entity. Anyway, yes.
Your vote is yes. It's yes on the application? Okay.
Yeah.
Lorraine Svalada?
I think the plan is lovely. I think it brings a lot of aesthetic value to the neighborhood. And it creates the light, the air, and all the elements that we look for. To me, it's very troubling that it's not open to the public, as I thought it was going to be. And I really struggle with approving it or not, because I feel like it should be something that the public should be able to enjoy. But having said that, I think the pros probably outweigh the cons on this. So, I will go with it, but with some reservation.
Ian Smith III?
I'm going to vote in favor of the application. I think it's, it's going to shine for that area and improve the image dramatically. There's no negative criteria, other than maybe some personal things that we've discussed. And I think it would be, raise values in the area immediately, once it's done. I wish you all the luck.
Hedo Taco?
I'm also going to vote in favor of it. It does meet the criteria for the variances. And verims, the intent of the master plan. Also believe it's going to be a big asset to the city, especially in the region.
Tim Coop?
I'm also going to vote in favor. I think it's a wonderful plan. I will say, similar to some of my colleagues, the user group concept is a new one for me tonight, and I follow this. But, so, anything to encourage a lot of use is great. I think it's a beautiful plan. It'll enhance the neighborhood, so thank you.
The plan is carried. We'll see you for the next one, Jay. If you could, if you get in contact with Roger to go over all the elements that you need for the plant, for the site plan, and have it all there in time, and we can go smoothly with it.
Thank you all very much for your time and patience, and thank you for the questions, too, because that helps us come up with a better project.
Mr. Delugry did a very good presentation this evening.
I was going to get paid anyway, but thank you.
And...
I'm going to provide some reasons for your...
Right, right. And you tap dance very well, by the way. Right. And you tap dance very well. You tap dance very well. So, with that, that is the aspect of it. Okay. Board members, do you need a break for a minute, or you want to go? Two minutes, two-minute break.